Good morning. I'd like to call and order our August 20, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting today, and I'd like to ask Commissioner George Wayne Honeycutt Jr. to lend us an invocation, followed by a place and basis.
Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for today, for your many blessings. Now, so I ask that you give us guidance in the decisions that we make today and at further meetings for the citizens of Wayne County, that we look at all of the facts and make sure that we make the right decisions to benefit all. We also ask that you give guidance to our leaders in Raleigh, that they will make the right decisions for the citizens of North Carolina. And I guess most of all, I ask for guidance to our leaders in Washington, that they make the right decisions. They have a great task of running this great country of ours. Sometimes they do not agree, but as long as the outcome is for the betterment of citizens of this great country. We also want to remember our men and women in uniform, especially the ones that are deployed, the ones that are fixing to be deployed. And to God, we do live in a military community, and we put so much on Seymour Johnson, but we have to remember, we have other military units right here in Wayne County. Our National Guard unit is fixing to be deployed, and we ask that you be with those young men and women that are sacrificing so much. And also, our military from the base that are deployed, keep them out of harm's way. Also, we want to remember our first responders that protected us here at home, and we ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I get approval of the minutes for August 6, 2019?
Salute.
Questions made. Any discussion? There'll be no discussion. All, please, raise your right hand. Thank you. And Mr. Honeycutt, discussion just was over the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We discussed in our agenda meeting that we do have some changes. Number one is, these will be added to our consent agenda. There will be a number seven, volunteer fire department funding agreements, 2019-2020. Number eight, proclamation recognizing Miller's Chapel AME Zion Church for their 144th homecoming and Founder's Day celebration for September 1, 2019. Number nine, appointment of Barry Gray as the Wayne County representative to the Census Bureau Committee. Number 10, motion to set public hearing for September 17, 2019, at 9:15 a.m. for the electronic gaming operations amendment. Again, that will be added to consent agenda. There's a couple of budget amendments we would like to add and take out as well. Number one, we would like to add the jail facility study update for $27,000, and also remove budget amendment number 70, which was a budget amendment request from WCDAs. Also, there's a budget amendment that we would like to add, number 96, county debt fund project, which is transferring money for our radio towers and upgrades. And then, under new business, we would like to remove number five, motion to approve gaming operations ordinance, as we're putting that as setting the public hearing under consent. Number five A, add to new business the RCC contract for tower sites, radios. That is a copy of the contract that has been reviewed by our county attorney that you have in front of you. And then, number five B, we are amending our capital project ordinance for the tower sites, microwave system, and distributed control points with the attached budget amendment. This was all discussed in our pre-agenda as well.
Okay.
If there's any questions at this time.
Any commissioner like to add anything? If not, entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion.
Motion made. Any discussion? Any discussion? All, please, raise your right hand. All right, Mr. Honeycutt, now, we saw our special presentations.
Yes, sir. First, under special presentations, is motion to approve opioid use disorder awareness week. And I think Mr. DJ Cole is here.
Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, fellow citizens, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is DJ Cole, and I'm the vice chairman of CALM, the Coalition for Addiction and Life Management here in Wayne County, and I have the pleasure this morning of reciting our opioid use disorder awareness week proclamation. In an effort to promote awareness and change within the county regarding the ongoing opioid crisis, to recognize the unnecessary lives lost, the grief of those who have lost, and the commitment of a community that cares for the all of those who reside within, against the burden of opioid use and accessibility, let it be known. Whereas, the opioid epidemic is a destructive force that does not differentiate between race or status, education or health, young or old. It tears families apart, darkens communities, and steals away the joy of those we love. And opioid-related overdoses are now the leading cause of accidental death in the United States, and the overdose death rate in Wayne County has increased by more than 200% over the last 10 years. And the estimated cost for medical and work loss in Wayne County from medication and drug fatalities exceed more than $25 million annually. And the economic future of a community depends on the overall health and wellness of its citizens, and the current trend of opioid use disorder is a complex and challenging issue that must be openly addressed. And increasing access to and support for substance use treatment and recovery is a worthy investment for our future. And providing open dialogue to increase public awareness and alter the longstanding cloud of stigma that blemishes hope for those suffering with opioid use disorder will bring value and progress to this issue. And everyone within our community cares deeply about the influence this epidemic has on prosperity and vitality. And whereas, the Coalition for Addiction and Life Management, also known as CALM, has committed to working within all layers of the community to promote understanding, enhance knowledge, and seeks opportunity for change in the face of this community's scourge. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 1 through the 7, 2019, as opioid use disorder awareness week. And the county of Wayne and call upon our community to observe this week to gain insight, to foster commitment, and to promote the call for remembrance, hope, and action.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Need a motion.
Move approval of the proclamation.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If there be none, all, please, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Next, under special presentations, presentation of retirement plaque by Wayne County Public Library Director Donna Phile.
Good morning. I had to bring Rosemary Loomis here kicking and screaming this morning. Rosemary has served as the assistant director at our public library, and I wanted to recognize her service to our county. Rosemary is an excellent reference librarian and had served in that capacity for 21 and a half years in other states and locations before joining our staff here in Wayne County. She, five of those years was academic librarianship, and then she came to the light, to public libraries, where she has served very admirably. It was our great good fortune in January of 2012 for Rosemary to join our staff as assistant director. Her husband is a faculty member at East Carolina University, and so she was in North Carolina, and it was just a great treat to have Rosemary serve alongside me at the library. It is true that she is my right hand, and I am not sure what I'm going to do without her, but we will manage. Rosemary has made many contributions to our library system and to the county of Wayne, and she is well-loved by our staff, as is evidenced by the posse behind me from the library, and also other county departments. I know the finance department speaks fondly of Rosemary. She has a great love for numbers, and so I love that about her. She helps me find funding. So, Rosemary, we want to honor your service by presenting you with a plaque. It reads, distinguished service award presented to Rosemary Loomis in recognition of exceptional leadership and devoted service to Wayne County Public Library. I could not have achieved the successes I have as library director without Rosemary's support.
Speak, Rosemary.
Come on, come on, you're not done.
Just stand right up your butt, you're listening, you'll take it.
So you're still jumping hoops at the end.
A little bit to the left, a little bit to the left, a little bit to the right. One, two, three. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We just had our library board meeting this past Friday, and the same comments were made at our board meeting. Rosemary is really, will really be missed, but we have some really good staff at the library that is, will try to fill that void as much as we can. But Rosemary's been around for a long time, and I want to personally thank you. I've served on the library board several times during my eight years as commissioner. I want to personally thank you for your dedication and service to the library. You care about children, you care about adults, you care about people in general, and that's a great quality. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my first two or three years that I served as a county commissioner, I served on the library board or committee, and Rosemary is just one of the most pleasant people on a day-to-day basis that you'll ever come in contact with. I mean, you know, I probably wasn't having some of my best days some of those times, but when you walk in the library and she's smiling, and someone responsible having some of the best sandwiches I've ever eaten.
That's true.
So that was, that was one of the things, I couldn't help but make a comment about that, but thank you so very much, Rosemary, your pleasant personality has meant a lot down there. Thank you.
Next, under special presentations, presentation of retirement plaques by Wayne County Health Department Director David Madden.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I have two retirement plaques to present today, so I'd like to ask Linda Byerly and Suzie Techie to come up and, if you'll just have a seat right there, Suzie, and I want to start with you, Linda. Linda has worked with the Health Department for 21 years. She has been a pillar of our maternity program. She's been hardworking and dedicated, and she has been an asset for all the time that I've been here, and I know she was before that. This is going to be a joyful sorrow because she gets to go on and do her personal things and enjoy her new adventure, but we will be losing a good one. And so, on behalf of Wayne County and the Health Department, Linda, I'd like to read you this plaque. The Health Department, in appreciation of 22 years of dedicated service as a county employee, for November 1, 1997 through August 31, 2019, we appreciate you. Do you want to gather? Now, our next one is a little more, even a little more sorrow. This is for 31 years of dedicated service. This is to Suzie Techie. You heard me describe, Linda, as a pillar of our maternity program and of our Health Department and our support functions. Suzie is a cornerstone. For the eight years I've been there, she has been a key function of our management team. She has been always responsive, dedicated, and always helped me be more intelligent. That's tasked unto itself, but I want to thank her greatly for that opportunity to let me work and learn from you, Suzie. In that process, I'd like to read you this. Presented to Suzie Techie from the Health Department, in appreciation of 31 years of dedicated service as a county employee, serving from August 22, 1988 to August 31, 2019. Thank you so much. I just want to say, there's only one flaw that Linda has. She laughs at half of my jokes.
That shows you're not very funny.
Are you going to stand up, David?
If you will, look at the cameras. One, two, three. Thanks, somebody else is trying.
Okay, thank you, David. Next, under special presentations, is an update from Michelle Estrada on community outreach. And this is actually a request from Commissioner Cromartie, as we were discussing during the budget process, about having Michelle come and talk about different things she was doing.
Mr. Bale. Well, you're going to talk about food.
Yes, good food. Yeah, Commissioner Bale, thank you.
You hit a nerve.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for the invitation. My name is Michelle Estrada, and I'm the Family and Consumer Science Agent with Wayne County Cooperative Extension. Very excited to be here, very nervous, because I have been working for the county almost 15 years, and this is my first time in this room. So, I can't believe this, but...
We'll have to ask you back there.
I know, right? Well, I don't know. Let's see how it goes today, and then we'll go from there. Well, I'm here because sadly, 73% of Wayne County adults are overweight, okay, and 33% are obese, and this is compared to the benchmark, the national benchmark of 25%. So we have a lot of work to do, and in a few conversations that I had with Commissioner Bale, you know, he always said, we need to do something for our staff. So I prepared these documents that you have in front of you about how to make a healthy environment in our offices. Before I did this work, I'm telling you, I was not a healthy person. My background is not in nutrition, extension, cooperative extension, change division, so I went from parenting to start doing nutrition. So that was a big change for me, and one of the things that I had to do is to also change behaviors on myself. I didn't want to teach something that I was not honest to the people, to my audiences. So I started making a lot of changes in my, in my life. I still eat ice cream and other things that I don't supposed to, but that's okay, right? Everything is in moderation. So, one of the biggest thing, how many hours do you spend at the office, at work? How many hours? A lot, right? Some of us, we may have breakfast, lunch, and dinner if we have a good lunch, a good breakfast, lunch, and dinner at work. So, very hard to have a healthy meal when you're around other staff members, that they are eating food that may not be the best option for us. So you're trying to do better, but then you smell that fried chicken, or you smell other things, and it's hard to stop not eating, right? Especially when, you know, somebody like me. But what I'm putting here together is things that we can do at work, you know, not just to eat healthy, but create an environment that we can have healthy food. We are very blessed in our office that we have Kevin, that he really is like, okay, let's, you know, and here, here's an example. We have a healthy nook, and you see a picture of our healthy nook, though he was able to support us in doing that. We have very equipment that is small, that doesn't take a lot of room, that is not expensive, that we can use to exercise while we're in lunch break or when we're in our breaks. So, another thing, you know, if you're having a meeting, it's hard to be sitting for a long time. Why we don't have those meetings while we're walking, especially if we don't need to take a lot of notes, if we're just having a meeting to create, you know, a program or to create other things. Another thing is to create conversations about healthy recipes. You know, we, we all love to talk about food, right? So how can we do this better? How can we start having conversations about healthy eating? And then, again, you know, design your space. We can, maybe, you know, an idea is that when a phone rings, we can stop, we can stand up everybody and start marching, or different things that we can do. So we already doing some of these things. I'm part of the Wayne County Wellness Committee, and this is led by Michelle Hill, our county nurse, and she's doing an excellent job doing all these things. One of the things, I don't know if you already heard, is water for Wayne, and the goal is to place water coolers in departments of 15 or more employees. You know, we all need to drink water, a lot of water all day, and what happened when we have the vending machines? Uh, let's get a soda, because we see the water, but if we're going to pay for the water, let's pay for the soda, right? So another thing is to have healthy vending in the, in the workplace. This is one of the hardest things for me, because I'm teaching nutrition, and when I use the break room to do, to do training, especially with children, we have the vending machine there, and guess what happened? Half of the room goes and gets the soda while I'm teaching about drinking more water. I know. And I say, I give you some free water, but still, but it's because it's there. And I know, you know, everybody has to make their own decisions about their healthy habits. Another thing that the committee is working on walking tracks, so the goal is to get Wayne County employees more physically active. We all know that we need to move more, and this is one that is very hard for me, is I don't like to move a lot, because I move a lot during the day, but, you know, if you have a safe area, like two or three years ago, I moved to a safer area. Now I walk every night in my neighborhood. Before, I had never done it, because I didn't feel safe. So that is another thing. And also, when you walk as a group, you know, we are supporting each other, we're cheering each other, so it's easier for us to move more. Health fairs, they have a health fair. Several years ago, I remember that we used to do it at the Wayne Center, a big fair, and I think this past year, they made, they did a smaller face, a fair. I was not able to participate in that fair, but I think the committee put, put a lot of work in that, and we just need to support them more to find resources for staff and for employees. And also, Michelle Hill has a wellness challenge calendar that I think we need to encourage department directors to encourage their employees, their staff, to work more in these challenges. Now, the next part is what I'm doing. And this is a partnership, the first program that you're going to see, it's Your Future Be There, and this is a partnership that we already did two programs for two years, Michelle Hill and I. And this is where employees, they go to the Maxwell Center in their hour, in their lunch hour, and they learn about eating, healthy eating, but they also learn about any topic that Michelle may have for them. And we also feed them. So, and then we teach them, you know, portion control, how to eat more fruits and more vegetables, and we give them the recipe that we use for that, for that meal. We would like to do it again next year. We're, we're ready to meet again, Michelle and I, in October, but we want them to be, to be sure that they have a little bit more time, because an hour, we gave them, the class is actually only 40 minutes, because they, we gave them 10 minutes to go to the Maxwell Center, and then 10 minutes to go back to their workplace. So we would like for them to have a little bit more time to participate in this. And last year, they paid $20 to participate in this. That way, they can help me a little bit with the food cost, and also, they pay for, it is called TANITA, and it's basically a scale where you can find your weight, but also how mu, how much fluids you have in your body. And I learned that I'm losing muscle. I'm not, I was not losing weight, but I was losing muscle, so they can learn all that too. Then there is other programs in here that we offer to the staff, like Fresh Cut Days, we do it at the farmer's market, the Healthy Connection with Extension is a newsletter that can go to anybody, and then the Extension Partners with different county agencies to offer educational programs for staff retreats, or we can also help them to teach their participants. Do you have any questions? No? Well, thank you so much for having me here today.
Before you leave, I just got to share this with everybody in here. She does, she does take the kids on road shows, and I went into, just happened to go into food line, and I was like, who are these, how much of these kids in here? And so I was, got around them and picked out what I wanted to eat, and I saw Michelle, and she was teaching them how to shop wisely and buy the right foods, and she caught me with a pack of Bright Leaf Hot Dogs.
I did. Yes.
But I put ketchup on them, that was my, you know, my best.
Okay. That was your veggie for the day.
It was really good, and she does a great job with those kids, and I had a chance to sit in one of your shows one day, when you were feeding Joe, and she, and she let me have a little bit of it, it was really good, so keep, keep that to good work.
Thank you so much.
Michelle is also the chairman of our Latino Council, so, and does an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Several months ago, I had occasion to be invited to a site down in Dudley, and I did promise the ladies that, that you might pay a visit to them. They were interested in some modern sewing and some of the very things that you have on this healthy living, healthy cooking. I thought, as I, as I'm always in the grocery store, not a lot, but I do see that population that lives right around Dudley, looked like to me they're utilizing some of the more healthy foods, you know, a lot of vegetable and everything, but she did express, this group did express an interest in having you to come down.
Just give them my information, I will be more than happy to work with them, and I always, you know, I try to, to work with them where they are, because that's where, you know, I was not like the healthy person, and it's not easy to change your behaviors when you're not ready. So I always, you know, like met instead of meds. That is a great program when you're already eating healthy, but if we start with that with somebody that is not there, so...
I'm going to try to drop this brochure off all the way home.
Thank you.
Because you have all your information.
Yes, all my information is there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, thank you for what you do, but you do have some real stiff competition at the curb market on Friday, don't you?
It is very hard, which is a competition, but when I smell it, it's like, okay, don't go there.
Thank you. All right, next is our public comments time. Anyone like to speak?
I live at 432 Club Knolls Road in Dudley. Uh, and before I start my comments, I just wanna say, uh, I praise God for the good health that he has given each of you gentlemen to bring here today, and I'm pleased that, uh, and I pray for you. Uh, and I'm gonna try to read this, so I don't go over my time. Gentlemen, we have all been moved by the pleas of the Edgewood School community as, as this county school system faces difficult decisions. There has to be change, many of those mandated by the federal government. While all of us don't like change, many of the Edgewood community are particularly fearful of the impact of change on their special needs children. Our school system was not fully prepared for the, for these changes, and is cautiously trying to respond, but they can only do so much with limited funds. Knowing some of the, um, compassion those who serve us in Raleigh have for our special needs population, I have encouraged, uh, some in the Edgewood community to contact, to reach out to our state legislators and, uh, and ask for their help. With the recent stud- state budget surplus of $900 million, the recent budget freeze, uh, during the new budget debate, and the continued diversion of, uh, pledged lottery funds, uh, away from Wayne County, Wayne County schools, there is a huge door opening, open today. Our state legislators can make a huge difference to help us provide an appropriate facility for many of those students, and provide some bridge operational funds as, as we work out a transition. I ask you to join me in praising our legislative delegation, and particularly State Representative John Bell and State Representative Raymond Smith for their enthusiasm in helping, uh, the county at this, uh, difficult place. Uh, I should add that, uh, Mr. Honeycutt told me that he had reached out, and, and Senator, uh, Jim Perry, uh, immediately responded, and said he wanted to be a part of that. I had not contacted him. Um, I asked this board to, to consider, uh, passage of a joint resolution with the Board of Education that Representative Bell has recommended, uh, so they can, uh, so they might bring a local bill to the legislature in, in the next few weeks for passage, uh, to secure the, the funds we desperately need at this time. Thank you, Representatives Bell and Smith, and Senator Perry, in advance for your compassionate, uh, response and much-needed help for the county, uh, you serve. Thank you.
Oh, geez.
Okay. Um, my name is Rachel Radford, and I reside at 1,005 Harris Street in Goldsboro, North Carolina. I'm concerned about the lead inspection that has not happened at Edgewood. I emailed Ken Durskin with Wayne County Public Schools on July 30th, after the inspection had not been done on July 25th. Ken did not email me back until August 12th to tell me the lead inspection did not happen, and that this would not impact families who opted to remain at Edgewood. Personally, I would have, I, I feel it would affect, um, children if there were unsafe levels of lead, especially the children with weakened immune systems. The areas where Wayne County Public Schools said the lead needed to be tested was in the brick building, not the modular units. These areas of lead include the gym, office areas, and cafeteria. I don't understand why other schools like Fremont Stars, who recently had asbestos removed from the kitchen, cafeteria, storage rooms, music rooms, a full hallway, and wall repairs, as well as Rosewood Middle having an infestation of termites, causing six classrooms to be redone with such haste, it does not seem like the Board of Education sees Edgewood children as a commodity to do a simple lead inspection for the safety of some of our most fragile children. I understand all of that needed to be done and should be done, but I also heard in a facilities meeting for Wayne County Public Schools that Rosewood Middle is getting a new roof when they are planning to tear down the building and rebuild in three years, but Edgewood can't get a lead inspection. I believe this was stalled to use as a scare tactic to possibly manipulate Edgewood families to choose Meadow Lane, along with the other lie they were told about having a self-contained hallway at Meadow Lane. Parents were also told if they chose Meadow Lane, that there would be an adaptive playground. However, when I called Meadow Lane yesterday, this playground was not there, not installed, and with no definitive date for installation. I spoke with several Edgewood families yesterday, who were very unhappy with the phone calls they received from Edgewood, that only added to their confusion. I asked two families, um, two of the mothers of the families, if I could quote them. The one mother said this, "I just found out every returning elementary teacher got moved to Meadow Lane. Our kids that stayed are getting long-term substitutes. I can't believe this. We are pretty much being punished for choosing Edgewood." The other mother said this, "I found out that my child would be in a kindergarten through second grade combined classroom. They don't have a teacher yet. I guess they're in the hiring process. But if all the Edgewood teachers are gone, I really don't know what else to do, other than find a private school. I'm not sure how it will all be set up at Edgewood. This is scary, and I'm in shock. I have Open House Wednesday, and hopefully, all of my questions will be answered. As of now, at 9:00 AM, Monday, August 19th, there is no teacher for my child. So unless something changes, my child will not meet his teacher at Open House. That will make dropping him off at school very hard the first day. Lord, help us." I don't know what can be done to change this situation, but having an elementary school with substitute is, is just completely uncalled for. Edgewood students have a standard of care that is so much above the regular public schools, and I don't, I don't know what these, these parents are gonna do, but when they tell me, "Lord, help us," that usually describes a scary situation, something that would be unbelievable. It should not talk about education. So, I really hope something can be done to help these families. I really hope families can get answers about this lead inspection, because I'm taking it very seriously, and I wish our county would too.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, public comments closed. Next, if you've finished, Mr. Swish Honeycutt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next, we have the discussion, uh, to approve the contract with Tyler Technologies for County Software Replacement for Finance Payroll Human Resources Planning and Inspections Departments contingent upon county and staff attorney approval. And we went over this during our agenda meeting. Uh, if there's any additional questions, Will, Ryan is here, Allison's here, we'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Tyler Technologies for County Software Replacement for Finance Payroll Human Resources Planning and Inspections Department contingent upon the county and the staff attorney approval.
Can I make one?
And that would be the actual purchase.
Purchase for the onsite.
Purchase for the onsite.
Solution.
Solution.
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion made, Mr. Daughery, any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand. Thank you. Consent agenda, we went over our 8:00 AM briefing. Is any, not any questions, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same, sir.
Motion made, any discussion? All in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand. And you, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number one is motion to accept tax collector's settlement for calendar year 2018 taxes in prior years, and Alan is here as well.
This is our annual settlement. We do this each year. This is required statutorily, that we do this. Carol said this was easy, I could even do it, so let's see if we can. It does work, yay, thank you, Carol. Um, as this reads, uh, this is a requirement by General Statute 105, 373, that we do this annually. Um, before we can collect our new year's taxes, we have to settle up with the old year's taxes. So, we are still in the 2018-19 tax year. And it also says we must provide a report of diligent efforts to collect unpaid taxes, which we will, and we do. These are our numbers. Uh, we are getting very close to $50 million in property taxes collect, to be collected. This slide here shows you the amount that was billed, um, the amount that was collected, and the most important part on this page is the, the one in red, the 98.10%, that's the amount we collected as of June 30th. Um, that number is a excellent number. Our staff does a very good job. This is a very important number. This, uh, once this is audited by our audit staff, this number plays a really important part on next year's budget. Uh, we can budget up to this amount that we collect previous year, so we try to make this number as high as we can get it. Um, it has been rising the last several years, so we are very proud of that number. Uh, like, again, our staff does a great job, um, collecting these delinquent taxes and our regular taxes. Any questions so far?
What is the rebates?
Rebates, there are a lot of things. Um, most of those, it looks like we're taking that much money away, but in, in fact, we're not. A lot of our business personal property accounts, our larger companies, when they get their bill, they may file an amended listing, and what we have to do is release the full bill, and then add it back, and sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, depending on what they, what they give us. So, that's sort of a little bit misleading, but it, it is considered a rebate, so we have to list them as such for the audit.
I want to change the term of that rebate to something else.
Well, that's true, but it, uh, it covers, it's covered a lot of, a lot of aspects of what happens. The releases, a lot of those are actual true releases, and those are when you approve these late applications for exemptions and stuff like that, farm use, that's what makes up the real actual leases. Those are more true releases and property taxes.
And one other question, that is your collection percentage.
Yes, sir.
Um, how does that compare to prior years?
Uh, last year, we were at the same amount, 98.10. Uh, prior to that, we were like 97.9, I think. This, this is the second year we've been above 98%. It's been, it's been climbing, um, and this, this number may change a little bit, sometimes with the actual audit, when they perform that, this number does change a spigot, so it may actually go up to a little bit more, hopefully, but we'll see. This is our prior year taxes. We still have delinquent taxes we have to pursue, and, um, as you can see, we're working on those diligently. This amount is a lot smaller than what is about, this, this is the other 1.9% that we go after, and, uh, and for previous years. When it says motor vehicles, that's one thing, that, those are motor vehicles that were built prior to 2013. As you know, in 2013, we changed the way we build those, it's now handled at the Department of Motor Vehicles, when you get your tags, the tax and tag, which we'll cover that a little bit later. So, this is our previous year's taxes that we, uh, we, we try to pursue. That number has been coming down. Uh, it's, it's getting, it looks like a lot, but it's getting very manageable in the big scheme of things, and this is actually 10 years' worth of property tax here, not just one year like it was before. So, over 10 years, this is what we ended up with. This is our vehicle tax system I just mentioned, that's filled to the vehicle tax, um, when you get your tax and tag. This amount, as you can see, the gross levy was 6.7 million, that adds to our county coffers. Uh, the one thing I want to bring note to is that percentage collected, that 95.81 is a little misleading, because of timing, when we bill our June bills, and those don't have a lot of time to get collected, so truth be known, this is like a 99 point, something, something percent collection rate in actuality. Now, is that fair to say, Allison? I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's excellent. It's a whole lot better than it used to be, the way we used to bill it, with this tax and tax system. So, like I said, in reality, this is like a 99, above 99% collection rate, which is excellent. Have about almost 110,000 vehicles registered in Wayne County. Interesting fact. And this is the part where we have to show that we're, we're working on trying to collect these delinquent taxes. Um, I do not want to alarm you on the fact this number has gone down. That means that, uh, actually, it's a good thing, because we don't have that many delinquents to collect. Uh, we, we've done a very good job collecting our delinquents, and you saw those numbers coming down, so those numbers are coming down, our garnishments, our bank levies, our rent attachments, and when it's going up, I do not want to alarm you on that either. Uh, we have a very good staff attorney now that's working on that stuff for us, Mr. Andrew Neal. He's done, him and, uh, he and Catherine have done an excellent job with this, and just because it goes to Andrew, it says foreclosure, it's counted as a foreclosure, and once it goes to him, just because it goes to him does not mean it's automatic foreclosure. Andrew does an excellent job working with taxpayers. If they can set up a payment plan at that point, he will work with them. It's not automatic foreclosure, but once it's sent to him, we have to count it as a foreclosure, because it's sort of out of our hands at that point, so I want to give kudos to Andrew and Catherine, they do a very good job for us.
Wow, 284.
And that's our presentation, and we do need approval for that, so, uh, we can carry on.
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, any discussion? All in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand.
And then, next is Alan, again, is motion to approve order directing the tax collector to collect the taxes charged in the tax records and receipt for calendar year 2019 and all prior year's outstanding taxes.
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will mention, we are working on our tax bills right now, they should go, hopefully, the first next week, so we will be getting those out, um, next week, hopefully.
Carter County is already ahead of you.
I know, well, we usually better, but we have, we had a couple new fees we're dealing with this year that are brand new, so we're trying to test and double test and triple test, to make sure everything looks good before we, we send these things out. And let me mention that too, but I don't alarm the public, on the bill, it actually says they're due September 1st, and that's coming up in a couple weeks, obviously, so... But you do have until January 7th of 2020 to pay those timely without interest or penalty, so I just want to make sure everybody, don't be alarmed if you get the bill right before Ju- September 1st, you have several months to pay those bills. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, under new businesses, number three, motion to approve work authorization, number five, amendment number two, from W.K. Dixon and Company for the Wayne Executive Jetport Corporate Area Expansion contingent upon completion of the independent fee analysis and approval by the Department of Aviation, and this is the recommendation that Brandon Gray presented during our agenda workshop.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move, uh, approve them.
All right. We started the meeting. Motion to approve, any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and next is number four, motion to approve Thoroughfare Fire Department securing a taxes at loan for a truck purchase, and this is just fairly standard, uh, that is requested by the bank.
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, Commissioner Acker, any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, number five, it was removed. Uh, we did add, uh, to new business, RCC contract approval for tower sites, radios, uh, that is attached in your separate packet that was given to you at our 8 o'clock briefing. Brian Taylor is here as well, if you have any questions, but the contract has been reviewed by our county attorney and staff attorney.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved, all in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand. Thank you.
And next is to new businesses, approval of the Capital Projects Budget Amendment. Uh, we did a budget amendment, but this is part of that Capital Projects ordinance, uh, for those same radios that we just approved, same radio project.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, any discussion, no motion? No discussion, all in favor, please, seek five, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next is a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners video that Public Affairs will present.
Did you forget our addendums? Did we go through that? Our other package?
Yes, sir.
You did?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Slipped it in there. I didn't see the proclamation recognizing Miller's Chapel Church.
Yep, we consented.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the top, seven, eight, nine, and 10, and I think Commissioner Carmody's gonna talk about it during his comments.
Okay, good.
Hello and welcome to this week's Video of the Week. As we move further into August, the 112th NCAA Annual As we move further into August, the 112th NCAA C Annual Conference in Guilford County is now less than two weeks away. This week, we'd like to take an opportunity to thank Guilford County for hosting this year's conference and take a look at some of the host county highlights. On Friday, August 23rd, Guilford County and UNCG will present on how they've teamed up to respond to the opioid epidemic. Guilford County has formed a collaborative with the UNC Greensboro Department of Social Work to implement a post overdose response program. This program has met with success in reducing the percentage of fatal overdoses, as well as educating public safety responders on the disease of addiction. This session will focus on how to implement a post overdose response program and how to leverage the academic community to assist local governments with solutions to complex problems. Speakers include Jim Albright, Emergency Services Director of Guilford County, and Chase Holman, Navigator, Guilford County's solution to the opioid problem. Guilford County has a family justice center that is succeeding in saving lives and restoring hope. This offsite session will provide attendees with a tour of the Family Justice Center, which since opening its doors in June of 2015, has served as a one-stop shop for thousands of survivors of family violence. This session is sponsored by the NCAA C Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee, and the presentation and tour will be led by Katherine Johnson, Director of the Guilford County Family Justice Center. In 2013 and 14, Guilford County topped North Carolina in the number of domestic violence-related homicides. Through the adoption of an integrated approach to providing safety and justice to victims of child abuse, elder abuse, and adult domestic and sexual violence, the county has realized a dramatic reduction in the rate of such homicides. A session on Saturday, August 24th, entitled Sleep Well at Night with Internal Auditors on Your Side, will be sponsored by the NCAA C Tax and Finance Steering Committee and features Speaker Chad Mulstein, Director of Internal Audit Guilford County. If you have nightmares about hackers, unethical employees, inefficient programs, or dealing with your external financial audit firm, an internal audit function may be just for you. This fresh set of eyes looks within your county organization to ferret out avenues for fraud, vulnerabilities, inefficiencies, and much more. Hear from our host county about the benefits it has realized from its team of internal auditors. The conference-wide youth involvement breakfast is always a popular event at annual conference where county officials and youth voice delegates begin the day together over breakfast. A brief presentation by Guilford County Commissioner Kay Cashin and Guilford County Vice Chair Jeff Phillips will highlight the Guilford County Behavioral Health Crisis Collaborative, a partnership between Guilford County, Cone Health, and Sand Hills Center that is moving forward with construction of a mental health urgent care center and two 16-bed facility-based crisis centers, one for adults and one for adolescents and children. Well, that's all we have for this week. If you have questions about anything you've seen here, please email communications@nccc.org. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you next week.
And now we will do our Catch a Glimpse video by Public Affairs.
This is Catch a Glimpse, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs for August 2019. The United Way came by to talk about their annual fundraising kickoff event happening in August, and the Partnership for Children came by to tell us all about Touch a Truck 2019. Craig Honeycutt, our county manager, stopped by for a talk with the county manager, updating us on everything going on in Wayne County. And representatives from the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition came by to tell us about the Purple Heart Banquet. Wayne County Public Affairs also covered the Purple Heart Banquet at the Maxwell Center. Some very special guests came by for a performance talking about Rock for Wayne, a benefit concert for Wayne Community College. And Mark Colbrook stopped by to talk about back-to-school events happening for students and for parents in Goldsboro. Local theater is alive and well, and Keenan Stewart from Center Stage Theater came by to discuss all the upcoming shows Center Stage Theater is producing. We visited Jessica Strickland at the Farm Credit Farmers Market to find out what's going on in the garden and learn more about summer camps for kids. Property Check is a new tool offered by the Wayne County Register of Deeds, and we help spread the word to help people prevent fraud. And United Way stopped by to talk about their annual Elvis fundraiser. We participated in an event hosted by the Wayne County Latino Council to help people prepare for natural disasters, covered a groundbreaking at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and helped clear the shelter with the Wayne County Animal Shelter, where 91 animals were rescued. This has been Catch a Glimpse. Now for a video from the North Carolina Association of County-
Next is a couple of county managers' comments. First thing I wanted to mention, and I want to turn it over to first Commissioner Acock, is the National Guard deployment service that was held Saturday at the Maxwell Center, and I want to let Councilman, or Commissioner Acock.
Yeah, we, we had the honor of participating in the ceremony for the deployment of the National Guard unit here in Goldsboro, and the Maxwell Center was full. In fact, it was, we don't have enough parking places. Some had to park on the grass and all. But it was a very touching ceremony to, and I guess the one thing that really touched me was when we could look out over the audience, and probably, what, between a third and half were in uniform that are being deployed, and I think it was General Boyett asked the soldiers that was going to be deployed to please stand, and it's, if that moment won't get to you, nothing will, just see those young men and women that are going in harm's way, and what they're going to be faced with, and to leave their families behind. But, you know, we are a military community here with Seymour Johnson, but I think sometimes we kind of overlook some of the other men and women in uniform that are right here with us, and we probably need to pay a little more attention to our National Guard units and other military personnel that we have here, because they, they put their step in harm's way, just like the Air Force does. But it was, in my seven years in as a commissioner, that was probably the most humbling event that I've attended, to sit there and, I mean, most of them are just kids. I mean, they're young, and that is, that's a volunteer service. But it was, I could go on and on, but it was, it was, that was a very touching service. And they were so appreciative of being able to have it at the Maxwell Center and not having to go to Raleigh. General Boyett said that, you know, he had never been in the building before, but, and our staff out there did a fantastic job. Joel and his team did a fantastic job in covering it, but it was a very touching ceremony.
And I did want to thank Commissioner Acock for, he spoke as well, and appreciate Carol going as well, and again, as Wayne said, it was, our staff did an incredible job for the setup and heard nothing but wonderful things. And also want to thank our Military Affairs Committee for their support in co-sponsoring the event as well. So the other things I did want to mention is our last EMS substation, our grand opening, please don't forget, is September 13th. The Wilson EMS substation on Miller's Chapel Road will be at 10:00 AM on Friday, September 13th. And also, we talked a lot today about funding for our radio system. We got notification yesterday that we got a little bit of help with it. The Duke Energy Foundation awarded Wayne County $15,000 for an upgrade of our public system. So again, I appreciate the work that Brian Taylor did, I appreciate the work that Barry Gray did in applying for the grant. It was out there available, and it'll help subsidize a little bit our radio. So $15,000 is $15,000, so we appreciate them applying for that. And did want to mention that you saw the video from the County Association, is that we will be attending that beginning on Thursday, Friday, and coming back on Saturday, the County Association Commission meeting in Guilford County. And that is all I have.
Commissioner Daugherty?
No comment.
No comment. Commissioner Carmody?
Just one, well, two. I did have an opportunity to attend the Board of Health meeting, previous meeting. It was rather short. I think I got there about two minutes late, and it was about two minutes into it, but anyway, that was a rather short meeting, but always efficiently run, so they don't take a long time. I would also like to bring some attention to, and add on to our agenda, is the proclamation recognizing Miller's Chapel AM Design Church for their 144th homecoming and Founders Day ceremony, which will be September 1st. The pastor, Mrs. Davis, when I first met her, she was at a previous church, and I was invited by some member, one of the members that came out of Wilmington to arrange for a proclamation and give comments. I find that very interesting, to do that, because you get a chance to look into the history of churches, and specifically black churches, and a lot of their timeline reached back into the 1800s, and they were able to survive with their churches, although in trying situations, while they were still either in slavery or right out of slavery. So these churches have survived. The other thing that I find very interesting, that they provided community education, and oftentimes, the nature of some churches, the pastor comes from outside of the population, and he's oftentimes, the connection, especially in the early years, in the early years, not so much in this century, but in previous times, they provided such a wealth of information because the congregation wasn't much traveling. They were farmers, they pretty much resonated to the community they were in. So the pastors brought in a lot of valuable information, and that continues to be so today. So I take a lot of pride in being able to provide my time to go and participate with churches. I'd like to thank Ms. Carol for helping out to get that done, and something, I got it about a week ago, and got it to her Monday or sometime in the middle. And anyway, thank you, Craig, and thank you, Carol, for helping to put this together, so that we could, I'll be able to present this Sunday whenever I attend that. Thank you very much. That's it.
Motion made.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell? No comment. Appreciate God.
Just two, two events that's coming up, is all I've got, is the Fire Fighters Association's meeting is tonight at 7:00 in Mount Olive, and it will be on Highway 55 at the Bobby Dinning Event Center. Mount Olive, Mount Olive.
Would you repeat your?
I said, it's the fire, the Wayne County Fire Fighter Association meeting is tonight at Mount Olive at the Bobby Dinning Event Center.
At the Bobby Dinning Event Center.
Don't say you have not been invited.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Eating that barbecue.
Yeah, healthy barbecue. And also, coming up, Sunday, September 8th, at the Maxwell Center, an event that I'm very proud of, and I think this is our maybe third youth rally. We'll probably have, well, it'll be maxed out, because they call it maxing out the max. But several of the local churches has come together, and there'll probably be 1,300, 1,400 kids there on that Sunday night. They'll bring a speaker in, they'll feed them, but one of the things that I'm proudest of is, the community has come together, and with the help of the county a little bit and the city, and a lot of generous businesses that we've contacted, we've raised enough money to pay the bill at the Maxwell Center to have this youth rally for these kids, and it's open to all churches. There'll be kids that are from 40 or 50 churches, and it's, you know, this is all about trying to keep our young people straight and moving forward, you know? I'm very proud of the community for this event. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
What do you think?
Just one thing, and I hate to do this, but I'm going to. You know, I've been out quite, quite a bit because of my health issues, and they moved up the primaries, so you have to register by December the 2nd. So that's moved that, moved that up. With much prayer and discussion with my wife, 32 years in state service, eight years as a chairman, I will not be a commissioner, I will not be filing for commissioner for 2020. I will finish my term, and I bring this up earlier, so allow people who wish to make the decision to run to do so, because you can't do it without a lot of thought and a lot of commitment. So again, I'm going to serve out my term, but I just think it's fair to both the Wayne County citizens and those who may want to serve, that I go ahead and announce it as early as I have, so. That's really all I got to say, and I do it as sort of a bittersweet announcement, because I really have enjoyed serving and look forward to serving through November, anyway, of next year, so anyhow, for those who want to throw your hat in the ring for District 5, December 2nd is when you need to make that decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to close session for the purpose of-
Consulting with your attorneys to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Motion made.
So moved.
All in favor?